...silence for you that may or may not remember Ray Smeltz and all the things that she did for the city of Sunbury. So tonight's moment of reflection will be for Ray. I'd like to leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Go call. Here. 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 I need approval of the fire department, police department, treasurer, engineer, code office, public works, development authority, partner recreation, and planning. Be a second?
Second. Christine?
Yes.
Shepman?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
And right now?
Yes.
Any audience comment on any of the agenda items before you? Okay. CBD update? I don't believe, uh...
She's not here.
She's not here. And, uh, anybody here, MSRI? Slade, do you hear from MSRI?
Yep. I just had the Renaissance Fair. We had a really nice turnout for the first annual Renaissance Fair. Went real nice. Coming up September 20th, we have the Wine Brew Fest. And then we also are back planning, pretty shocked planning for the New Year's Eve celebration. That's what we have going on right now.
Sure, I heard it was a great success. Oh, you had good weather again. We've been fortunate this year.
Yes, we have been very fortunate with the weather.
Any suggestions what you can do different next year?
Uh, pray for the same weather.
Same weather. Development Authority update? We're getting, I understand, we're getting a list together for auction, right? That should come up in a year.
Oh, yes. We have auctions scheduled for 613 Catalasa Avenue and 239 Spruce Street for Tuesday, October 7th. So that's on the horizon.
Okay. Uh, new business. Uh, first of all, I have an ordinance for code office, stormwater.
Uh, I'm gonna, Mike, you wanna talk about it, or...
Sure.
Okay. John? John, go do some step in at any time. Basically, we have a proposal for a subdivision that's gonna be going before planning on next Thursday and hopefully for final approval to you on the next council meeting. Basically what it is, it's a very simple subdivision. A gentleman's looking to sell a property on Seventh Street that has two properties sitting on it. Unfortunately, both properties sit on the same deed, and the financial institute would like to see the building separated. Asking for you to approve a waiver for the subdivision for Act 4, Minus 143-9. It's because there's no construction, no development, no nothing. It's just a simple subdivision of one lot into two, but both lots are over $5,000 square feet.
Right now, each lot has a separate building on it?
I'm sorry?
Where each lot has a separate building?
Well, it's one deed that has two properties on the same deed. And the gentleman are selling the prop, the gentleman's selling the properties, but the financial institute would like to see the property subdivided, so each property has its own deed.
But is one like a yard and one's a building, or there's...
They're two homes.
Two homes.
Two homes.
Somehow another home line that got deeded is one, has one lot, two homes on it.
That's right. You're similar to the double homes that were on one deed, where you separate the two halves. This is two single lots on one deed, separating two separate parcels, each of which comply with its own, each of which have their own sewer service and water service and industrial facilities. He's asking, uh, the first step in the approval process is to act on the property owners' request to waive the stormwater management order. There's no construction, so there's no pre and post-stormwater calculation to consider. So that's the motion tonight before you is to consider a waiver for such a 143-9 of the stormwater management ordinance. If that's provided, Mike will carry that motion to the planning commission, and they will review and take my comments and the municipal party's comments into consideration if combined with the right investigation for that much deed.
I'd like to make that motion that we accept the waiver for the stormwater, so the, and I, my understanding is that the lending agency, the bank that's lending the money to the new buyers, and when it wants it separated.
Correct.
Yeah, we saw it on one deed, and, uh, it just makes sense to do that.
You have no issue with it, John?
Say again.
You have no issue with it?
I have no issues for it. I'll make that motion. There have been some changes made to the plan based on my review.
Be a second?
Second. Shepman?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
For a second?
Yes.
Dale, PA road closure, who we order September 21st, monument parade, Santa parade, and it looks like we're gonna do the rest of the year once. Go ahead.
Terry submitted all three of Mike, Mike, and Penn Doc as separate letters requesting no closures for this deed. That's the motion.
Be a second?
Second.
Which, 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 please?
Martin?
Martin?
Right here?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
And you can Catalasa Avenue deal?
Yeah, um, several months ago, I received a phone call from Penn Doc. And Mike Ordin and myself went out and had a meeting with Randy Taylor from Penn Doc, another gentleman, and a lady from Mont Torsville, who is one of the leading people. And what they do is they go around the different means of how, is they have state roads, and they offer some compensation to maintain them in the meantime. The order is on that, and then when we don't stop, they're gonna...
They have a little hole.
And we talked, um, their biggest concern, uh, if everybody had a copy of the sheet, I don't know. We have split, and there was a crack. Here's the other one. There's another one. I'm gonna read it. Catalasa Avenue was the main concern because they come off a long hill with a big triax or a template truck. So they come down Catalasa, and then they turn on the Packer, which they would still like to maintain. Originally, I got goofed up. I thought it was from the city line all the way down to Market Street. What they were asking us to do is go from Raven Street down to Market, file it, salt it, which we do it out anyway, because we don't like to rent it and salt it. They have a preset rate of what they'll pay for what they, what they measure out. My Catalasa Avenue, thirteen hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. We'll get that whether it snows or it doesn't. They have a formula that they use last year with all that extra snow, we would receive extra compensation at that point in time. They did not give a sheet on what that would be, that's determined by how much snow they get. So I talked to Mike and myself. It would just be too much for us to take Reagan, all of Market, all of Fourth Street, and those, and those major streets. So my recommendation is what I'd like to see is us sign the agreement that we would take care of Catalasa Avenue and Reagan to Market, and we would compensate. It's a five-year contract. But after the fifth year, then we would have to renegotiate, or say yes, no, whatever. And they have a slider in there that if the fuel goes too high, they compensate that.
So you're making a motion that we adopt out of this whole list, just Catalasa Avenue?
Correct. It would be from Reagan to Market.
Reagan to Market.
So I'd like to make that a form of a motion.
Be a second?
I'll say it.
Ister?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Shepman?
Yes.
Arm of approval, Rick?
Uh, Mike, you want to do it again, buddy?
Gordon. Have two projects on the agenda that the HARB on last Wednesday met with. Uh, the first one is 212 Market Street. Basically what it is, is built right across the street. There's an old concrete ramp there. Um, the owner, the new purchaser of the building, would like to remove that concrete ramp and put up a wrought iron type fencing with type, some type of a flowering inside this wrought, wrought iron to spruce up the, the aesthetics of the front of the building. Um, it was approved by HARB, Ward, uh, with the installation of the wrought iron. However, if he chooses to stick a second handle in, uh, HARB asked that he either use wrought iron to match the rail, the fencing that he's proposed to install, or match the current vinyl railing that is there now. And he's agreed to that. He has agreed to that, yes.
Second property?
Second property is 340 Chestnut Street. Um, basically what they want to do is restore their deteriorating, uh, front porch. They want to install that to its original as, as much as possible using, uh, all wood. Only change is they want to put some type of vetting system in. Uh, the HARB suggested that they go with a, a, uh, disc vent type thing, drill some holes and put them up through, to keep as much of the aesthetic storybook as possible. Uh, but the biggest thing is they want to, uh, take the painted brick pillars and, and remove all the paint and expose the brick to break out the, the story end of the porch once it's all done. And then they also have agreed to, uh, follow the HARB recommendations.
Okay, questions? Do we have a motion, Rick?
Yep.
Be a second?
Henry?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Shepman?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Our resolution lease purchase code vehicle, Rick?
Uh, yeah. Uh, we, the last meeting we passed the purchasing of the vehicle, a four-year lease. Uh, and some landlord company gave us a call and told us that we maybe ought to look at another lending agency rather than them for credit. Uh, and we did, and we saved almost 2%, I guess it was around 80%. Ford was a little over 5, and this is under, I don't have the exact figures. Terry has it, but she no location. So, uh, but, uh, the, the bank wants a resolution that we pass before a loan sum that we're, that the council authorized that we purchased it. So by here result, the council's standing for free borrowing of like $2,700 from the county. Sure, but, but I'm just saying, the system is authorized to sign the documents as, now therefore, my signature of this resolution is adopted, and the, and the eighth day of September, 2014, David Ruff, Saint Mary, and, uh, John Shippman, your, our, our council finances. So I'd like to make that motion that we get this resolution signed so we can save 2%.
Okay, be a second?
Second.
Christine?
Yes.
Shepman?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Henry?
David, can I, can I just interject something real quick?
I want to thank Mike and Joe for initiativeally showing since I've been in office on going out on these different projects. I don't think, I don't know, sometimes we have different agreements, and sometimes we just don't see eye on some things, but on a whole basis, I really appreciate the work that you guys have done. Uh, not around all the ground. We got a lot more irons in the fire than we've had, uh, since the beginning of the year. We picked up, we'll do a lot more redevelopment and stuff like that. And alls I gotta do is make a phone call, or a letter note or something, and you guys have the initiative to go out and do it on your own. I really appreciate that. I just wanted to hear.
Okay. Who the pain voices, vouchers, John?
Uh, we have general fund budget, uh, vouchers to pay approved in the amount of $28,472.6 and, uh, we have, uh, liquid fuels, uh, in the amount of $1,572.13. I'm making a motion that we approve the payment of our bill.
Shepman?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Taxes on racing, John?
Okay, we have, uh, three individuals, uh, applying for taxes on our action. Two of them are took the building, buildings. Uh, one individual has paid his per capita tax in another district, and that's what he said. Uh, total is about sixty bucks. I'm sorry, about a hundred bucks. I make a motion that we grant the honorations to these states.
Be a second?
Right here?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Shepman?
Yes.
Audience comment? Anybody specific? Yes, sir?
Yeah, um, I applied for a handicap.
We just need your name for the record.
Ronald Ross Moore Jr.
Okay.
I, uh, applied for a handicap parking spot for the place that I'm moving to.
Okay.
And you guys denied me a handicap parking spot.
Okay.
And the reason you gave me is because I'm a non-driver.
Okay.
And I, as you can see, I can't drive, and I'm wondering why I was denied.
And where's the address? What, what did the letter say that you got? Is that what it said, non-driver?
Yeah. So the reason why you guys did not give me the handicap parking spots is because I'm a non-driver.
Right.
I, I can't drive.
I know, but then, why would you need a parking space if you own a car?
Because I have a car that tra, I, I own a car that I get transported around it. My girlfriend and me own a car. And if I clean snow, so I can get in and out of my wheelchair, and somebody just pulls in there, I'm gonna be stuck out of the street.
Well, I'm not, I'm a little confused. You have a car or you don't have a car?
I have a car. Me and my girlfriend own a car.
Okay.
That I can transport in it.
Okay.
And I can't drive, so I do own a car.
Well, normally when somebody says they don't have a license, then we assume they don't have a car.
Yeah, he don't have a license, but what he wants, get a handicap sign put in front of his house so he can park there, you know what I mean? So he can...
I understand that, but now...
They're saying...
And we'll take, we'll take another look at that, because there's other reasons too. But if, if that's the reason it was on the letter, and I don't remember exactly the owner letter, then that's because we had sent, and we thought he didn't have the driver. He didn't have a car.
No, he hasn't owned a car.
Okay. Now we'll just, now we'll look at it from the viewpoint that you own a car, and is, is there enough parking space here, you know, for the other reasons like that? So just, what's the address?
What's that? It's, um, B, what is it? Hold on a second. Zone South Fourth Street.
Where do you live?
Well, no, I'm moving there. It'd be 317 South Fourth Street.
When did you supply that?
Well, a couple months ago, but this year you guys send back, like, July 22nd is when you guys sent me this letter.
Did you get a hook down, Mike?
There's an existing handicap spot right?
Yeah, that's for the neighbor.
That's for the neighbor.
Wait, wait, no, no, they're, they're not private parking.
They're not private parking.
But if we put a handicap spot in front of your house, everybody's handicapped and parked. It's not your personal spot.
He only has three cars down there.
Yeah.
He owns three cars. He has, he has his Cadillac parked in that spot, and that Cadillac does not move.
Other people do that in the city as well.
He owns three vehicles down there.
Yeah, he don't move at all.
I don't, I, they're right in front of my house. They made a sidewalk that goes all the way out to the curb, so I can clean that curb wall, so I will be able to get out of the car, something like that. I mean, and when it snows and stuff, everybody piles snow between the sidewalks and the street. There's no way I'm gonna get out of a car. If I have to, I mean, I don't want to clean a spot out so we can get in and out of a car, and somebody pour in there and take it, then I'm stranded out in the street.
I understand that, but there are very few places, city blocks, that we have two handicap parking in the same block.
There's four that have...
Oh, a handicap parking?
Yeah, but they're on the other side of the street, and the people are dead, and they're...
And they're used all the time?
Huh?
Are they used all the time?
I can't park on the other side of the street to get into my house. There's no, I mean, well, if it snows, and then somebody doesn't shovel their sidewalks, it's kind of hard to get...
Again, like Dale said, if, if, if Jim owns a, has a handicap sticker, and he wants to park in front of your house, he can do that, so you parking across the street shouldn't be an issue.
He can only do that for a couple of hours. He can't, he cannot take that person's...
No, I'm saying, yes, I can park across the street, but if I get four, three, four inches of snow, and you guys are plowing the streets, you pile the crosswalk shut, there's only places where I can get on a cur, up on a sidewalk.
We have that everywhere, sir. I know it's an issue, but we have that everywhere.
And the sad part is, Ronnie, you, you can have that handicap park cleaning out of snow, or whoever, somebody with a handicap can slide right in there.
Only for two hours, because those, those spaces are reserved. Some of the signs say reserved, some of the signs don't say reserved. But the ones that are reserved are reserved for the address, and you can, and you can deal with Penn Doc on that. They have their own regulations.
Does the city of Sunbury issue any private for specific addresses? No, not the city.
And I believe that the letter you received says that?
Yes, the letter that...
The letter he received says that.
The letter that you guys sent me said I can park in somebody else's parking lot only for two hours. So I hear the letter.
So who's right?
Who sent the letter?
Uh, Terry.
The city clerk. Well, she's misinformed the nap, because there is a, and like you, when you said about Penn Doc, Penn Doc doesn't do city highways. That's a city ordinance.
Penn Doc issues that pass that you put in your car, sir.
I have it passed.
Yes, and that doesn't tell us where you can park in the city of Sunbury.
No, since when does Sunbury follow rules?
Well, anyway, if you're asked for a review, I'll, I'll take it upon myself to review it, but if it was denied for that reason...
Well, I have one other question.
Yep.
Is the names in front of you guys all your guys' names and stuff? Because the Department of Justice wants to know all your guys' names.
There they are. They're on the internet.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't know, I don't know these other people.
They're all on the internet.
I mean, it's a shame that I'm being denied a parking spot. I mean, a...
Four, four handicap parking spaces in one block. I, I, last thing you say, you're being denied.
There's not four. I'm saying...
Did you just tell me there's four, wait? Four parking spaces?
No, there's not. There's two on the other side of the street that I cannot use. The people, the one, the lady's been dead for six months, so that should have been taken away.
Somebody use it?
Huh? I can't use it.
He wanted to use it, but he was told that he can't, and we just got down and came.
I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to say is if it snows, or it looks bad weather, and I'm in my wheelchair, how am I supposed to get into my house if I'm parked on the other side of the street?
And I'm not, I'm, I don't want to argue with you over this situation, because I'd like to help you out, but I'm telling you, there's a lot of people in City of Sunbury that have handicap parking spaces that are exactly in front of their house. We can get them as close as they can to this facility, but if there's four in one block, because I didn't realize, we even had four in a block in City of Sunbury, that's a lot of parking, handicap parking spaces in one block.
The ones that the people are passed away, shouldn't they be taken away and grant me one in front of my house?
They're there because, again, anybody can use them. If somebody passes away, and somebody's in that area is still using a handicap, they can use that spot.
I'm gonna ask you a question. When it snows, and somebody doesn't plow their sidewalk, and I have to go all the way down to the end of the block, so I can get on a jump ramp, and then you guys are plowing snow, and there's a big pile of snow there, how am I supposed to get to my house or go there?
I don't know how people handicap get when it snows. Any of them get to this spot? We're not taking on you. It snows, it snows. We clean off our streets and sidewalks the best we can.
But if I have a handicap parking spot in front of my house, I can keep, we can keep it cleaned up, so I can get out of my car, get in, onto my sidewalk, where it's made for a handicap person.
Okay. All, all I've said, and these guys, we can, I'll probably, I said I'll review it the second time, or I'll take a look at it second time, but it looked down like Mike's already been there, so...
Yeah, but like I said, the ones on the other side of the street don't do me no good, because if they don't plow the, shovel their snow, I'm, I'm stranded.
All right. So when you officially moving in this house, you're not in yet?
Probably by then, uh, next month, when I have it all done. I mean, they made, there's a ramp, there's everything there for a handicap, I mean, I have handicap showers, everything put in that house.
So, my question, so you're saying, Sunbury do not have a handicap just for you? I mean, you pay like, you say, you pay so much a year to have that handicap.
Oh, there's not like...
Like Lewisburg has that.
We don't have, you don't have anything.
You don't have nothing like that.
We have no reserved parking on our city streets. We've looked at it, because it's, it could be, but the bottom line is, the city of Sunbury was built with, you know, with horse and buggies, wasn't built for every, every home that has three cars, and that's what we have now. I mean, there's, the parking is, part of that ordinance says it doesn't matter if there's no handicap in that block. If the parking is that bad, you can't give up a parking space, but they've been denied on that. That's one of the things that the ordinances...
Because I saw some handicap places that have a handicap, but then some has, was their license plate number on it, so that means you cannot park in that spot.
Oh, that was just a way to identify.
They don't have that in Sunbury.
Yeah, I've done the same. Yeah.
Well, I know, like, if you're saying Lewisburg, Schmuck, they also have that.
Do they charge them?
Yeah, but you gotta, yeah, you gotta pay for that.
Yeah, thirty, I think it's thirty-five bucks. And then you're a handicap park.
Maybe we'll get, maybe we'll go to Schmuck and ordinance to see how that works. Maybe that's the answer. Maybe some people want them that bad.
You see, then illegally, we have to ask the solicitor, if it's a handicap park, it, I don't see how you...
Well, so I said, let's get an ordinance for the Schmuck has, let's just get there to see what it says.
We can do that.
See how they get around that.
Right, and just for the record, I mean, if somebody dies in a house, we don't know that. I mean, down on Lindis Street, George Fecker passed away for quite a while before...
You remember Dale?
Yeah, he never knocked it, or to take it down.
But how do you guys know that? You know what I mean?
No, we don't.
That's what I'm trying to say. We don't know that.
Yeah.
If she, if something...
He mentioned it, or we wouldn't know.
Yeah, I mean, because you guys would never know. Somebody's got a handicap. How you gonna find out?
Well, he said that, they already told him that, the guy wasn't parked in that, so they, they already...
Who told him?
I don't know.
Must be the neighbor.
Mike, that might be brought up.
Yeah, we just had to enter, make the, make the handic, the rule out.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
So when will I next get...
Why, you don't, you're not even in the house yet, sir. Right? You just said you want to be in the house another month, so I would imagine we have some time to look at it.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, well, you guys notify me or?
Yeah. We have your address and I'm assuming we have a copy of the letter that we mailed, and we should have that. So we'll notify you. Two weeks, next two weeks.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make a comment pending the street lights that I brought a couple weeks back. Almost all were up and running and city looked better for it. It was almost forty sunlights out at one point, and last I looked down, there's only six. So.
You realize that drives Jim's go up though, it's like.
Doesn't drive kids like to go up, drives citizens actually go up, but if you have lights, so.
Yes.
And it does look better this year, especially between third and fourth street. That's the one, one whole time, that one. Good job, it wasn't.
Thank you.
I'd like to say too that we really enjoyed the hanging baskets. They stayed really nice on some of them.
Thank you, SRI.
And they were beautiful.
If you didn't have a real hot song, I think that helps.
Well, thank you.
So I'll tell you what happened. There are new baskets this year. They have a two and a half gallon reservoir, so we don't have to water every day, and they're solid on the outside, they don't have the husk, so the wind can't blow through it. And the city crew has done a marvelous job of watering them on a regular basis, we appreciate that. And SRI got the money together to buy them, we appreciate that.
Well, they're beautiful.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, crosswalk, I'm sorry.
Um, I, that was my question I was asking of when you, I was asking about the crosswalk, so I'll let you finish.
Crosswalk on Market Street between Second and Third, Jim?[1461.12]